In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Bryan City Council meeting on October 19th. We appreciate anyone and all participation. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
To approve.
I'll second. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Clerk Treasurers' Report.
The council's been presented with the Clerk Treasurers' Report for the month ending September 30th, 2020.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Item number three is a hearing of public concerns, and I believe we have one, so if you wouldn't mind Kent coming to the podium, just state your name so that it's on the... Do I need more?
No, I have a question for you. Was anyone else going to come up with you?
Well, I thought so.
Yeah.
There were a couple other ones I got there.
There are two in the lobby, so if you want to just put your stuff at the podium and wait, that's okay. They've got to come up the elevator if you want to wait for them.
Sure, okay, sure.
Make yourself comfortable. I just didn't know if you wanted to get started without them here since our security screening.
So they're coming in now?
They are.
Okay.
Yep.
You've got a long agenda.
Uh, not more than usual. We have an executive session after, which oftentimes is anywhere from two to three times the length of the meeting though.
Gee, somebody tunes in, they're going to think their sound is off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still here. We're still here.
We could have Rick start to sing a tune.
There you go.
I'm not going to be your backup.
You are. You are going to be the backup.
I am not going to be your backup.
They are.
Yeah, we're done.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome. We just started. We were waiting for you. We just started, as I told Kent, for the hearing of public concerns we try. I'm not going to have you on time, but we do try and keep it to like five minutes or so if that's possible. So, but thank you for coming. Go ahead, Kent.
Well, thank you for allowing us here. My name's Kent Hardy, and I'm a representative of a small group of the local citizens. We call ourselves CARE, creating a real equality. A couple other members are with me here, Lori Avina and John Avina. We just spent some time up on the square, as we have been for the last several months, in support of equality for all people of all races. 2020 has been an interesting year in a lot of different respects, in addition to COVID-19 and the election and all the other stuff that's going on. You know, our country has witnessed some pretty trying times when it comes to race relationships all over the country and indeed all around the world. And so our group has been standing in solidarity with those people who have been mistreated and abused because of the race of their race, because of the color of their skin. And that's why we decided to, some people call it a protest. We kind of call it just stand in solidarity and in support of those people. We're not affiliated with any other group at all. We're a standalone group. We're all citizens of Brian. Glad to be citizens of Brian. We have had an opportunity to talk with the mayor and the chief of police briefly. It's been a couple months ago now, I think, month and a half ago or so, and tried to highlight some things that we were thinking about. And in talking with the mayor and the police, we began to understand some of the things that the police department has to deal with too. And it's not like we didn't know those things existed because you read about them in the paper. But some of the things you don't read about in the paper, and those are some of the things that we wanted to find out about. We wanted to know, because standing on the corner of downtown Brian, we've gotten a lot of reactions from the public, a lot of it positive. People would come up and say to us, you know, "Good job. Thank you for standing in support of these people." A lot of thumbs up, the peace sign, other sign languages that I won't show you. And there's been some opposition. Some people think it's politically related, which it isn't, at least from our point of view. So they've had some pretty unkind things to say too. And we've, some people have asked, you know, "Who hires you? How much are you getting paid?" and that type of thing. But for the most part, it's been very positive. And I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot about the people of Brian by standing there and seeing what they think. Because some of them do stop and talk to us. They actually do. They want to know why we're there and what's going on and, you know. They start telling us their stories. I had one guy stop and talk to me about his family who's adopted some kids, some of them of color, and the trials and the tribulations that they have had to go through raising them. And so we've been able to share. So when I, you know, when we think about race relations in Brian, a lot of people may not think that we have a problem, but we do. But it's unspoken for the most part. There are a lot of people who just don't like people of color. They don't like other people standing up for them, or they don't understand what's the big deal, you know? We've had the Civil Rights Act. Slavery ended a long time ago. Can't we just get over it and go on? But the truth of the matter is, life isn't like that. And so we wanted to be proactive in our approach to a problem that exists. I don't know if it's a big problem. I just know it's there. And I don't think we'll know until we get into it a little further if it is a big problem. But we wanted, like I said before, we wanted to be proactive, and we wanted to talk to the council, and we want to ask for your help in pursuing this issue. I'm aware, and I think the mayor mentioned it first to me when we first met, that the state of Ohio is probably going to set forth some new mandates or new laws regarding how police interact with people and those things. I don't think anything has happened formally yet.
Not yet, sir.
Columbus has got their own problems right now, and they're trying to sort through some things. But I know that laws and ordinance and policies, while they're necessary and they have their place, they're limited in what they can do. They only tell you what the bottom line is. The law can't inspire greatness. The law can't inspire excellence, and it can't create virtue. You know, like traffic laws. Traffic laws are important, but they don't make you a courteous driver. Tax laws are important, but they don't make you generous, and they don't make you financially responsible. Neighborhood association laws are important, but they don't make you a good neighbor. The right to free speech doesn't make you kind. So our vision is, we want to take whatever the law is. We want to go above that. We want to, and our thought is to begin with is to hold a town hall-type meeting where we can meet and discuss and challenge each other head-on with the issue. We know because of the people that we've interacted with, there are talented people that live in our town, professional, average citizens, clergymen, that have the potential to lead and find the solutions that we need to overcome this problem that we have. And so respectfully, what we'd like to ask the Bryan City Council is to consider our proposal of a town hall where we can gather citizens together and talk to each other out loud about the problem of racism and bias, and to find out how much of a problem we have and to look to find a solution. I'm hopeful that the information that I sent out in the email and the attachment speaks a little bit more to, you know, some of our background and why we feel so passionate about what we do. I don't know if any of you have any questions that you'd like to ask me or Lori. Do you have anything that you would like to say quickly?
I think about the only thing I'd like to say at this point is that, yes, our town is mainly white, but there are minorities, and that is our future. This town will only become more diverse, and we should embrace it, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
So just in closing, I want to say this is not a us versus you or anybody else. We want to partner with the city. We want to work with the city, the city officials, the professionals, those average citizens that live out there and have to deal with some of the stuff that we've talked about. And we think the best way to attack that is ahead of time, before it becomes a real problem that you have to go back and try and fix. And I think we can set an example, too. Some of the larger cities in the state are struggling with what to do, and indeed in our country, and what to do and how to do it, how to reform the police department, whatever that looks like. But we want to talk about it ahead of time and get to a place where we can not only meet the mandates of whatever law might come to us, but rise above that and be even better than what the law might mandate. So we're open to talking further with you anytime you want to. I think you have my phone number and all that kind of stuff, and I'm ready and willing to talk with anybody about it. I know there's other people in the community that want to be a part of this. They have things to offer, and they think kind of the same way that we do. So if you have any quick questions, I would answer anything.
I just have a comment. You know, one observation that I have is, obviously, you're very passionate. You don't go out and stand out there and dedicate the kind of time that you have to a cause without being passionate. And I appreciate that. The information that you presented is very, very good, and was kind of interesting as I was reading through that because I've heard a lot of those things echoed in the national news that, you know, in regards to where people are in their status and things like that. And I just want to thank you for all of what you're doing, being able to stand for a cause the way that you are.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I would think, I would agree and echo that. I would think that to have, there's two things that come to mind. I'm a little more into the concrete planning ahead. I think there's two things that come to mind, Mayor, with me. One is to have a town hall would take a social gathering. Is that correct?
I mean, I would assume the format, because when you initially talked to us, you would like people from the city and also from your group to kind of sit together and have the community talk to us, right?
That's one way of doing it, and of course, the COVID-19 presents a problem.
Well, that's where I was getting, yeah.
But.
The timing of it made.
We have technology too. I mean, we can stream some things and we can record some things. It doesn't have to be a giant, you don't have to fill a gymnasium full of people, but you can have a good representation of the city in a smaller area, spread apart. Couple microphones here and there, and just talk to each other and bring concerns. I know our chief of police would like to share some things.
I'm just, I'm.
Well, a suitable venue that has literally everything you would need and is also owned by the city is the football stadium that I used to run track in.
Um, yeah. Can you come up to the podium? Sorry. I don't know your first name.
John.
John.
Thank you, John. I apologize.
It's all right. My name is John. As far as venues go, first of all, I mean, it's 2020. We can easily, it can easily be done over any one of a number of online platforms, which allow any number of people into a digital town hall. And if we want to do it in person, obviously with COVID-19 going on, it would have to be an outside venue, someplace that has amplification so that speakers could talk, and also, you know, restrooms in case anybody needs them, and enough space to social distance. And the football stadium, the track and field, the bleachers there, offer all of that. And it's city property, is it not?
It's actually school property, but it's in the city limits, yes.
Yeah, my point is I know what's available. The issue I have is, I don't know about the rest of council. I would appreciate a little more of a concrete plan with that, that would state, A, here's how we could do this. We can have a Zoom meeting. We can, we've talked to the school. We can use the school activities, the facilities, et cetera. So we can do that, and this is how we're going to communicate to the community to indulge them and bring them in as they wish. Because I think you'd probably want something more like that, like a community conversation. So at least that's what it sounds like.
Yes.
And then the second thing that would be helpful for me for implementation would be objectives, agenda, timeframes, some, here's what we would like to accomplish. Not, you know, I'm not that anal, but something that says, here are the objectives that we would like to have. Something maybe as simple as racism is about ignorance and fear, as well as some other issues. And so we would like to, one of our objectives would be to discuss that and have a conversation with that, about that, and see where people are at with that. Because I think a lot of people believe that they are the least racist person that they know.
Sure.
Those people always scare me, by the way. But my point to this is that if you had something that was concrete to respond to, that would be helpful. Like, this is how we could do it.
We actually have spent a lot of time preparing that stuff, and we're waiting simply to get in front of you guys to see how you respond.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we've done a lot of background work already.
But the issue is very broad and affects a lot of different areas. You know, we see it in the news about the police force. But it also affects housing. It affects the judicial system and the jails and those kind of things. It affects the schools. So my own thought is, you can't cram all that into one meeting, but you may have three or four throughout the year.
Right.
To address every.
That's kind of what I was after.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that, that then I can, then it's easier for me to respond with, this is how, this is how we could be more a part of it. Because you wouldn't, actually, you wouldn't have to. And that's what I appreciate also, not only your passion for this, but also your asking to be a part of it with the city, for the city to be a part of it. That's what I would be interested in. I am not speaking for council. I'm speaking for me. That's what I would be interested in, to be able to say that this is what I think is good for the city of Brian, to participate in this kind of, and you might have five people, you might have 500. It's not about numbers. It's more about awareness, would be my general thought. So if you already have something like that, that would be helpful to have, to be able to review.
And we understand. It's not going to be like next week. We understand that. It's going to take coordination, and we do need other people input. I mean, there's nothing else. We're being tight now. It's everybody.
We've gained a vision because we've stood on the corner and we've interacted with people and watched and listened, and that's how our vision came to us. Now we have to transport that and share it with other people so that you can get an idea of what that's like. And we understand that, and we're willing to do that.
Well, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
And I have one very short thing to add. I kept mentioning that he did sit down with Chief Chappa and I. We went over the things that Bryan PD does, the rules that we have in order to even hire an officer. We do go, I think we can all agree, above and beyond what the standard is from the state on that. We talked about how it is in the life of a police officer. We know that there's racial inequity everywhere. But I appreciated that after they listened, because I let them kind of talk for a while. I think that's fair. We were in for about a little over an hour, and then I kind of added some things. Chief Chappa added some things, and I noticed that your signage changed. There were, it was less about an anti-police, and I'm not saying you started that way, but I think.
It wasn't anti-police. It was reform.
Correct. Yeah, and I just appreciated that there was give and take in that conversation. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and actually, part of our vision is that we'll go beyond this issue as we listen to the police chief and a guy who is passionate about his job and who had tears in his eyes, or at least his eyes were watering. He cares about his job and the people that he represents and what they do. We would like to be able to help the police also.
Protection is for everyone, not just one side.
Absolutely.
Exactly. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good seeing you. I haven't seen you in a while.
And I'm sorry it's so hot in here. We had an air conditioning issue this morning, so.
I'm still layered up and I'm just.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item four. Lori, if you could read number three.
Ordinance number 46, 2020. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number two and final for the project known as 2020 Street Improvement of Mayberry Drive from YMCA entrance to Center Street, Bryan, Ohio.
Good evening. The final figures came in for the Mayberry Drive project. We had to add some extra asphalt to meet the existing parking lots there, both by Sumpur Field. With that, this project price increased $5,248.89.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes. By the way, Mayberry Drive looks very nice.
Yes, it does.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, ordinance authorizing, I'm sorry, Lori, if you could read.
Ordinance number 47, 2020. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one and final for the project known as 2020 Cavement Marking Program.
The final figures for this project came in, and this is a decrease of $10,555.49.
Well, then overall, we're ahead.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, Lori, read.
Ordinance number 48, 2020. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for $296,574.18 for the local coronavirus relief fund. This is our third and final installment on the CARES Act money that we just received from the county on October 12th.
Which is the total of all three is about what?
About $722,000.
I thought it was like three quarters of a million.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Item number seven?
Resolution number 37, 2020. A resolution providing for the repayment of an interfund cash advance. This is a repayment of the advance on the South William Street project, $31,476.10 from the 415 project back to the 1/2% income tax fund, and $243,523.90 from the project back to the 502 water fund. Total amount of repayment, $275,000. And the check did come in from the state.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Fire departments, item number eight, fire department status change.
Good evening, council. Before you tonight is firefighter Casey Sanders. Casey has completed his probationary period with us. He's doing a good job. And with your permission, I'd like to place him in regular status.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Status number 10, item nine, status change for the police department.
Good evening. I'm down before you a status change for Tony Potts. A mutual decision was made to Tony Potts back to patrol officer status effective October 19th. His wages should be adjusted to the contractual rate.
I'll motion to approve.
Can we find out why Tony decided not to stay on as captain, because he's only there four months?
I spoke with Tony Potts several times. We've had discussions about his performance, and during the conversation, both parties expressed issues that arisen. As a result, we came to the mutual agreement. The best part, of course, in action, both parties involved, they had three terms.
involved, we have returned to patrol officer.
Was it a performance that could be fixed, or, I mean, he's been a patrol officer for how long, and he was only in the position four months, and I know with my position, there's always a learning curve, and I just didn't think four months was quite the learning curve.
A lot of it had to do with his base of knowledge, and our managerial styles weren't really meshing together, and he, it just came to that, it wasn't, it wasn't working, we both saw the writing on the wall, and to not further stress each other out, we agreed that we can see where this was heading, and it wasn't good for either of us.
So, you're saying part of it was a personality conflict?
No, it wasn't a personality conflict, because we get along fine. What it was is styles of how we were to manage, and I think that's where I should leave it.
But what I'm hearing here is, it was a mutual issue, it was not one-sided.
Correct.
So, from that perspective, it wasn't, some performance issues were brought up, but the issue was, I don't want to do those things, that's not what I believe I should be doing or can do. It's that kind of a conversation?
It wasn't an agreement that this is the direction that we're going, and he didn't understand why he was doing that, or had conflict with it, or understanding of it.
Okay.
Even after discussion.
Yep.
Was there any write-ups?
Yeah.
I mean, if you want us to say that in open session.
Yeah, I'm just asking if there was any write-ups, because I know when Tony was promoted in this position, we were told that he didn't have any write-ups, and I hate to see write-ups go in someone's record.
It was a...
For four.
Form of counseling letter.
Pardon me?
It was a counseling letter after it was discussed.
I don't either.
Where are we?
I'll second, we need to second, it's mutual.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy? I'm going to vote no, because I'd like to talk to Tony first. Rick?
Yeah, I wish, I wish I knew more, I really do, because four months is a very short period of time, but I'm going to vote yes.
Mary?
I'm going to vote no.
Agenda item number 10, status change wastewater.
Yes, Wes cannot be with us tonight, but Brett Miller has completed his one-year apprenticeship and passed the state class one certification, and per his contract, will be moved and reclassified, so we're asking for that wage change.
I'll motion to approve. I'll second. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
So, I'd like to go around, any city employee that's on Zoom, or any BPA member, if you have any comments you'd like to make?
Counsel, I'd like to make mention that this year, because of the current pandemic situation, we had to cancel our annual awards banquet that most of you attend on an annual We still go ahead to recognize some folks, and I'd like to do that tonight via this council meeting. First of all, we had some individuals who were able to complete some training, Kara Bach, William Douglas, and Zachary Berstorf, each of these individuals completed their firefighter one training and their hazmat operations training. We also had firefighter Drew Short complete his EMT training and certification, and firefighter Michael Ruby went out on his own and completed his advanced EMT training. Also, we had a 20 years of service recognition for Rodney Carlisle, who has been with us for 20 years, and Ryan Hake was voted by his peers as firefighter of the year, and Greg Greiser received the chief's award for professionalism. All of these individuals are very much an asset to the fire department, and we thank them very much, and I just wanted to pass this along to council to make you aware of the awards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no one else, let's go, Judy?
Yes, first, I would like to say congratulations to all the firefighters, I did not write down all their names, so I'm not even going to try to repeat that, but congratulations to all of you. I also would like to say the concert Saturday night was excellent at the new amphitheater, the parks department did a great, did really, really well on social distancing everybody, and I want to comment on how I thought that was worked out very, very well. Congratulations to Casey Sanders, Brent Miller, and Tony, good luck on whatever you're doing. Okay, that's it.
Mary?
I would like to thank Kent Harding for coming and talking to us tonight, explaining what his group does, it also helps with knowing what's going on on the square that we don't know, but now we do know what it's all about. I'd also like to say congratulations to the fire department for your wonderful work that you do by protecting the city, and that's it, everyone have a good night.
Jim?
Sure, congratulate the fire department on all their successes, I'd like to congratulate Brett Miller, welcome Casey Sanders, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Harding for his insight today. Have a good night.
Rick?
Just want to echo those sentiments with Casey Sanders, Brett Miller, congratulations there. I do truly thank the care group for coming up and addressing council tonight and explaining their position, and I want to thank all of the firemen for everything that they do for us every day in protecting us, and I just want to say a special thank you to Rodney Carlisle, I've known him for a long time, and 20 years, it's hard to believe he's been out of high school for 20 years, so I guess that tells you how long, how old I am, so, because he was one of my students, so, but thank you to all of you for everything that you do.
Rhonda?
No, thank you.
Lori?
No, sir, thank you.
Mayor?
No, thank you.
And I'm not going to repeat all of it, except just maybe quickly summarize, congrats to all the firefighters, to Brett Miller, to, thanks also to the care group that came up as well, and appreciate all the city employees and what they do each and every day for our city. At this point in time, I'd like to suspend the meeting or take a recess, if you will, and then we'll go into executive session to discuss compensation of personnel. Thank you.